It is afternoon, but looking outside, you'd never know. It's Monday, November 13th. This is the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority meeting for the month of November. I'm calling this meeting to order, and I have no particular welcoming remarks, other than good to be here, or announcements. And first up is our usual approval. One motion to approve three things: the agenda, the motion to approve all bills and payrolls, and the motion to approve the October 10th meeting minutes. Does anybody have any comments, or anything to say about any of those three agenda items?
I'll make a motion to approval.
Thank you, John. Second. Thanks, Wes. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. And the opposition, not hearing any, those pass. Public comment? No public, no comment. Onto current and old business, financial updates. Charles?
The authority is in pretty good condition financially. We are running a $362,000 surplus to the year, but that's only because we're not undertaking any huge projects this year. So, we're going to be banking that money, and then adding to that with next year, the 2024 billing cycle. Aside from that, expenses are within budgetary parameters, by and large.
Okay. Comments? Questions? Deborah?
Yes.
Payments received. What's the update?
Last month, yeah. Last month, we had 290 unpaid bills, so we did send out the reminder letter. And to date, we have 167 unpaid. Last month, we had around $61,000. That was delinquent, and we're around $34,000 right now.
So, would you say sending out those bills was helpful?
I wouldn't say, yes.
I mean, I should say reminder notices.
Yes. And they're trickling in daily. We'll get like, maybe two or three, maybe up to five. I would have expected more coming in, because the last, you know, the previous cycle years for delinquencies were around 35. And we're still at 167. So, I'm not sure what's happening this year, but make sure you pay your bills, because they will be going to lean early next year.
If you look at it from the point of view that you have 123 people that paid, that would have otherwise, had you not sent that, received a certified letter, six or seven bucks a pop.
Right. It definitely was good. I just was expecting more payments.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. So, that's something to remember. We ought to, I think, if it's okay with it, make it automatic next year, just, that was in October, right? Just put it on our list of usual protocol. Okay? Good. Lean's filed, which there's no questions for Deborah.
I have nothing to say, other than, I don't think we've had any been paid off since the last meeting that I recall. As Deborah said, if they're not yet delinquent, they're in their past due phase, they become delinquent as of January 1.
Right.
Subsequent to that is when the authority will send out its certified and first-class letter, telling people that they have essentially 30 days to pay, or that the authority has the capability, should it choose to do so, to file a lien.
Right, if they don't pay.
And historically, when we send those letters out, those 30-day, certified letters get people's attention. They just do. About half the people pay.
Yes.
Generally. And then, once the liens are filed, half the people pay the liens off within two weeks.
Right.
But they won't get that certified letter until when? March?
No.
No, probably mid-January.
First or second week of January.
Okay. Good. Good. Okay. Any questions on that? No? Okay. Move on to the budget.
So, last month, we looked at the first round draft of the budget. I included that in your agenda packet. There's a detailed report, and then a summary report. So, on the screen right now is the summary report. This revenue side includes the maintaining of the 2% discount that was the source of discussion last month. We're projecting that we would raise about $482,000 for next year.
When you say that, that is the budget for next, that's the revenue budget and matching expenses?
Correct.
Right.
Yep. On the expense side, get to the detail one. The bottom, the last line item is the one of interest to most folks, because it's the capital improvement line item. We're forecasting $285,000, which could be dedicated to big projects for next year, which would be added to our 300.
Right.
That we have in the bank right now.
So, it's roughly $500,000?
Through the next billing cycle.
Right.
Correct.
And not including any grants that are out there, but we'll talk about that later.
Grants, the ever-elusive grants, yes.
We'll cry about them. Okay. Any questions on that? That 482 is the target.
So, yeah, so if there's no changes that the board would like to make, we could move this forward in December, and have it approved for the 2024 cycle.
I don't know if I asked this before, but it lists those projects. Which area of Lincoln Avenue are we redesigning? For Stormwater? Or is that Lincoln Square? Is this supposed to?
No, it's Lincoln Avenue.
Lincoln Avenue, yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Where Old Harrisburg Road comes in, and it turns. It's east Lincoln Avenue.
Kind of a dip there.
It's kind of, yeah, there's that bend, the bend in the road, and then east of that is East Lincoln Avenue. That's where we're looking at. So, Columbia Gas is doing a project in that area, and we're looking to try to get ahead of them. The street needs paved, but we want to do the sewer, I mean, the storm sewer and the gas lines before we pave the street. They're looking, within the next two or three years, to be doing that project, so pretty soon. We don't know an exact scope, so that's one of the things that, as we move forward with our capital improvement planning, and we want to try to determine an exact scope, if it's going to be just Lincoln Avenue, that east Lincoln Avenue, or if it's going to expand because storm drains, there's old corrugated metal pipes. When you start replacing them, it's like you can keep chasing it, and chasing it, and chasing it, and where do you stop? So, I want to be clear about that whenever I answer your question. It's east Lincoln Avenue at Old Harrisburg Road.
The area that's the borough.
That's the general area.
It's not the state highway.
So, even the state highway, we own the storm drains, keep in mind.
No, but the section you're talking about is.
The section we're talking about is the borough street.
Not the state.
That's the primary. There are some borough-owned storm drains in the state route as well, that we might end up getting into, as we chase this corrugated metal pipe that's failing.
Well, the grates on the curve go down a driveway, that first house, and connect with the storm sewer between Barlow and Lincoln.
Exactly.
Right.
Right. Yeah, there's going to be some, I think it does that twice. And that same pipe run, then if you get all the way down to the stream, there's another place where it crosses private properties. We're going to have that same dilemma to deal with as well.
Yeah, and part of that pipe's under that wall. That's an ugly.
That's a, yeah.
It's an ugly section out there.
It is. Yeah, that's why, so if you look at our capital improvement plan, the first step is to do kind of some master planning, get that section mapped, get some length, some cost estimates, on exactly what we want to replace. We don't have any televising on it. We might even try to get some televising done, to try to really determine what the scope of that project's going to be. Because it could be a $100,000 or $200,000 project, it could also just as easy be a $400,000 or $500,000 project, just because that pipe run continues all the way down to the stream, obviously.
Well, the pipe run between Barlow and Lincoln goes down almost to the end of Barlow, comes in the property, the river property on North Fourth Street. Unfortunately, it makes a 90-degree bend, goes out under Barlow Street, back across private property to get to Stevens Run.
Right.
That's just.
90 degrees.
90 degrees. Ugly, ugly, ugly.
Right. Columbia Gas hasn't defined their scope yet either, so we're kind of, it's a bit of a chicken and egg thing. We want to see what they want to do. Our main goal is to make sure we're ahead of them.
Yeah. And unfortunately, they're forcing our hand. I mean, we have a lot of things to do. This wasn't quite on the list. In fact, it wasn't on the list.
Right.
At all. And now, all of a sudden, it is, and these are the things.
Fuck them, I recognize that.
Yeah, right.
Everything else, I recognize.
Yeah.
Well, and the bad part about it is, kind of like Chad said, I'm very concerned about, you start with that storm sewer, you're just going to.
Yeah. It's going to keep going.
It's just going to keep going.
That's, try to find a place to tie back into the old, and make it good enough for now.
Well, and that's my point. It is good enough for now, but now, we're forced to do something. Yeah, I know east Lincoln has its problems, and it's got to get paved, and that's true. But.
I'm with John. It's, it may be ugly. I think what we all, we all agree upon, it would be a bad use of borough funds to repave streets.
And not do the storm.
And not take care of storm drains, and have them collapsing underneath of our brand new streets.
That's just nuts.
Yeah.
I agree.
We get into some televised, though. The storm sewer between Barlow and east Lincoln did some work back in there. Parts of that is CMP, and parts of it is concrete.
Okay. That's good news.
Well, it is, except we don't know how they tie together, and where that is. We just know that there are different parts we've dug on. Sometimes it's concrete, sometimes it's not.
And of course, we always have to temper our enthusiasm with televising, because sometimes those old corrugated metal pipes, you can't get the televising equipment.
True.
The whole bottom's worn out, so it's, you can't get the televising equipment up the pipes.
Yeah. It'll be an adventure.
It will. Definitely will be an adventure.
Well, we'll, we'll be talking about this, you'll mention it a little later, but we've pretty well discussed it. But, meeting dates are next, actually, on the agenda.
So, just to clarify, then, the board is okay with putting this on the December agenda to approve?
Let's, let's talk about it. Everybody good with it?
I think so.
Yeah. As long as, I think we understand that this is our goal, that if we have to have meetings that are in white, then, you know, they're out there, but our preference is exactly right to use the meeting dates in blue. Those are the official meeting dates.
I'm sorry, I meant the budget.
He meant the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, budget.
For December to approve.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay.
I'm good with both.
I'm good with, I'm good with both. Anyway.
Fair enough. So, yeah, the thought would be to, I mean, there's several months, if you look back to our agendas this past year, where we just canceled meetings.
Right.
Because there just wasn't enough to talk about. So, the thought was to kind of go to every other month, outside of the two, right in January and February, because I think we have to reorganize in January, right? So, if the board likes the meeting dates in blue, we can advertise those and put them on the docket.
You good?
Okay.
You good? Charles, you good over there? Okay. Okay. All right. We'll do it. Old business. Chad, it's your show.
So, I believe first, we're going to talk about the Bream Alley Channel Wall. The good news there is the permitting went very well. It was submitted, we didn't have any comments from DEP, and got our permit back pretty quickly. The bad news is that, in order to be able to get this wall design right, we had to include PA3 railing, which is expensive. So, the cost estimate did go up. We're at over $200,000 now. I think we're like, at around $220,000, we're expecting. If you can remember, what we originally estimated for the H2O grant was about $500,000 for the projects, and I think it was around $170,000. It was under $200,000 of it was to go to this wall, and then the rest of it was to go to potentially another wall. So, if we had to spend more on this wall, that's taken away from another project. At the end of the day, we know this project's getting bid with GMA's Sewer Interceptor, so there is some savings there, with the economy at scale. I've delivered all of the documents at this point, our design, the specs that we developed for the new wall, and the permit, all to GMA for their review. So, Bukart Horn is currently taking a look at that. The only thing that we need to do at this point, from our end still, is I need to gain an easement from the one property owner, where it goes onto private property. So, I've been playing phone tag with the property owners there a little bit, haven't made a lot of project, or progress with that yet. So, that is one task that's still on my to-do list for that wall. But generally speaking, we're in good shape with our design, with our part of this project. I think we're around $16,000 or $17,000 into our engineering budget. We had budgeted 35 for it, so we still have plenty of money to be able to get through any type of a construction. There isn't going to be a lot, again, for us, most of that's going to be on GMA. So, we're doing pretty good with our budget on that project.
And the construction management, is that in your feet?
Yeah, so they would do all the contract administration.
Okay.
Component of it. We would do the inspections of the wall when it comes to it.
Okay.
That's the only part, the inspections of the wall is really the only part that goes into our, so that could be just a couple of days, going out there, you know, having Jared, who sits in my Gettysburg office here, swinging over and taking a look at it, as they're building this wall.
Yeah, I think that would be prudent.
Right. But most, 90%.
Because we're going to own it.
Absolutely.
We should know.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. But 90% of the construction management is the contract administration, and that all is on GMA.
Okay.
That's the, that's the big savings there.
And can you, in 30 seconds, explain the railing that's increasing?
Yeah, so the T3 rail, you can't just put a guide rail on it, because a child could fit underneath of it. They need to have, they need to have four-inch gaps in between all of the rails, right? So, the T3 railing has those, the square tubing underneath of your railing.
Strattan Street.
Yep.
I know.
Yep. And those aren't cheap. And then, and then the problem is, the other, it's a compounding problem. First of all, you had to go with the more expensive railing, and on top of that, the way that you mount that railing has to go into our wall, because there's not enough room to put it back behind the wall, or you squeeze in the alley. You don't have enough room in the alley. So, basically, you're putting it, the nice thing is, we're using these segmented blocks that are hollow in the middle. They're big squares, and they're hollow in the middle, so you can drive the I-beams down through those holes in the blocks, but it still, it takes a lot of extra reinforcing into the wall, to be able to put that guide rail in.
Well, hopefully, they'll be able to endure tractor trailers, and stuff like that, that navigate that alley.
Well, the concern there is, yeah, now, if they hit that railing, you could cause the entire wall to fail.
That's right.
Right. Likely will, at least the top few courses.
Right. Yep. Yep. Anyway, okay, it's got to be done.
It has to be done, yep.
Thank you.
And there's just no way they're getting that project complete, as we spoke several times, without fixing that wall.
That's right. That's right. Absolutely. Any questions on Bream Alley?
Chad, keep going, man. Next is Mayor Alley. So, that's where the Sycamore tree was. Mayor Alley's right behind the Fawnsworth. That project is, for the most part, done. The borough crew put in the rock, aligned the embankment with the rocks, so that's all done.
Oh, it's in now?
Yep, the rock's done.
I'll check.
The, the bridge work that was associated with the boroughs, the council's bridge project is done. They're making a payment tonight on their council agenda. So, Robbie had a couple of things to do, to clean up there. Last time I took a look at it, he was still, there was a fence that needed to be put back in, split rail fence, but that's really it. The guide rail's done, as part of the bridge project, so it looks pretty good, I'm pretty happy with the way it turned out. We're finalizing our permanent easement with the property owner, Mr. O'Shea, because, as you know, we're going to have, the borough will have permanent right-of-way then, through this whole process. That was one of the things that was agreed upon with the property owner before we entered into the project. So, I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. Really no action that I need from you guys, but feel free to go out, take a look at it sometime, if you'd like to, and.
I'll go out.
If, if, there's probably not a whole lot to update you on after this, this meeting, so I'll probably take that off of our to-do list.
I think you can. Okay. Channel wall analysis of Stevens Run, the Tiber.
So, as we were looking at this project, another item came up, where there's a private property owner involved. And so, I want to make sure that we keep that discussion ripe. In this case, it is the Fawnsworth. Just a little stream that goes right through that little courtyard into Fawnsworth.
Right.
Question comes up again, is who owns that wall? And we talked to Mr. Schultz there, and he said that back in the day, there was some handshake agreements with the borough, that he was going to pay to do certain things, and then they were going to agree to maintain it. And that's probably accurate. He said, "Yeah, I meant nothing, it was ever put in writing, that's just the way we did business back in the day." So, it's another one of those things where it needs maintained. If it doesn't get maintained, it could, it could start to fail on him. If it starts to fail on him, it comes a borough issue, not just a Schultz issue, because now, the whole thing cannot drain properly, and other properties flood. Now, you could always argue that what would happen, if that would fail there, we would, and Schultz wouldn't do anything about it, well, we would go in, and we would dig it out. We would turn it into an open stream. We would have to do that within a couple of days, to make sure that the water could flow. That doesn't necessarily mean we had to go in and rebuild walls, but we would have to go in and dig it out. If, you could argue that if the property owner wanted to keep the wall the way it is, that that's their responsibility. So, we've had this conversation a lot of times, right, in other places with Stevens Run, I just want to make sure that you're aware, that now, it's also a topic with Culp's Run. The solution right now, we had our contractor take a look at it when we were out there, our bridge contractor just happened to be right there in the area when we were looking at this. So, we had him swing over and take a look at it, and he said, "Well, there's anywhere between a $5,000, $10,000 fix, up to a $20,000 to $25,000 fix, depending on exactly what all we want to do."
What's the alley?
So, the mortar joints are all starting to erode, just like there's all of those block walls, the mortar joints, more so towards the bottom, where the low flow is, it eats away at those mortar joints. And then, it starts to undermine the walls. And you can start seeing the walls are starting to bulge, and they're starting to come in. There's a rock or two missing, that had fallen out of the wall. It's not as bad as Bream Alley, but it is, you can tell, it's, if they don't, it's salvageable. That's the good news. With the proper underpinning, clean out under the toe of it, and you put a wedge of concrete, triangle edge of concrete, you underpin it, try to drive some steel rebar in, you could save, and proper mortar pointing, repointing, you could save that wall. And that's what we're talking about, in that $10,000 to $20,000 range. So, the question to you guys, and then I did offer to Mr. Schultz, that I would at least bring it to your attention, to see if that's something that the Stormwater Authority would want to contribute to. I think the property owner is eagerly looking to do something about it. I don't know that it's an imminent failure, like it needs to be done here this winter, but certainly, in the construction season next year, I wouldn't let it go for another year, without having, having given it some attention. So, it's again, something that the Stormwater Authority should think about. I'd invite you to take a look at it, maybe, over the course of the next month or two, and try to get back to me. I think we should keep it on here as old business, until we get back to Mr. Schultz, and let him know if we want to contribute anything. Because like I said, there is a borough component to this. I could see it, it would be maybe a worthy use of some Stormwater funds, to help preserve this wall, rather than having to react to a catastrophic failure. That's always more expensive.
Do you know how much feet's underground there? I mean, we're talking from the alley into the back courtyard, right?
Mm-hmm. You're talking, the piece that are under his buildings?
Yeah.
Who, how many feet? And by the way, we're not talking about that stretch. That is a stretch that Mr. Schultz is aware that that's under his building, that's on him. We're talking about the stretch through his courtyard.
So, the exposed?
The exposed piece, yep. But there's a significant piece that's under those, it's underground.
The front courtyard, or the back?
It's kind of two. There's a little piece that goes under, and then there's like, a building, I'm going to call it an outdoor bar area. Shed looking thing goes underneath of that, and it's exposed again. And then, it goes under his building for quite a run, that John's describing there. I'm going to say it's maybe 200 or 300 feet under, under the building. But the exposed pieces are under 100 feet. I'm going to say two sections of 40 feet, something about that.
My two cents is, I think we ought to get a number. Couple of contractors.
Try to get a more accurate.
Yeah.
Number.
Uh-huh. And, you know, I would say, if we're okay with this, start some preliminary engineering, take a look at it, find out what the number is, and let's just hold our breath that, you know, it's something that we could do.
Yeah, and to be honest, there's not a whole lot of, well, it depends on if this is a, so if the expense to the Stormwater Authority, one of the things you ought to think about is, is the bidding component. That's where the most engineering would come into this, because there's not a whole lot of rocket science to underpinning and remortaring the joint. So, the contractor could almost do that with some direction, you know, our engineers could give them direction, that we want here, 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 and they're going to say, "Yeah, we are," it's pretty obvious. Right? So, I don't see a huge expansion, in terms of engineering, aside from the bidding. So, that would be one of the things, you know, whenever we come up with an estimate, is it's going to be a privately paid thing, because then, you don't have to bid it. Or is this going to be a Stormwater thing, where then you have to look at the bidding thresholds, and those kind of things.
What is the bidding threshold?
It goes up a couple hundred bucks every year. I think it's around 11.6 this year, something like that. 11,600.
It may not be a bad idea to get a title search on that property, just to make sure there is nothing that's long-forgotten regarding responsibility or ownership for that stuff.
Well, that, that starts the whole idea of Stevens Run, and property searches, and everything. Well, I think you're probably right, that we ought to at least do the due diligence, and understand what we're getting into. If there's anything that's.
I doubt it.
I doubt it, but, because, like you said, in years gone by, everything was a handshake, and it worked out, but the problem is, there's no record. So.
So, it sounds like the direction for me is to follow up with the contractor and the property owner, try to get a cost estimate, and then bring that back to you guys for a decision on, break out of costs.
And I think part of this is reasonableness, you know? If you're getting a number that you think is not right, then I think we ought to pursue other people.
Absolutely. And is Adam looking into the deed research?
I'll do that.
I think we need to do that.
You guys agree?
Yeah, it's just. I know it has to start somewhere, right?
Right.
And this just seems, we're gonna be working there, that's a good place to start.
And yes, if you would keep it on the table items, that would be great. Lincoln, that's Lincoln Avenue master plan, right? We already talked about that.
So we talked about this earlier. It is on your SIP. And the sooner that I can get green light to get that started, the better. Both of those two master plans, the Lincoln master plans and then that discussion that we just had with Lincoln, we can have that exact same discussion at where High and John's meets, because Columbia Gas is looking to do all of Cool Park within the next five years. So that's another one of those piping systems. Goes around in a circles there behind the Dobbin House. And where do you stop? So trying to get our arms wrapped around the scope of that is gonna be important. Our capital improvement plan is gonna rely on two things. Grant funding, hopefully we find out this month, that's what we're hearing. And then secondly, what do these master plans tell us in terms of the scopes of these projects? So again, and I don't necessarily need the green light to start those master planning processes tonight, but it wouldn't hurt tonight. But sometime soon, sooner than later, at least with the Lincoln Avenue master plan, we would like to try to get that started.
Now, do we have any numbers on estimates of cost for the master plan?
Yeah, I was estimating the Lincoln around 10,000 and the High and John's around 20,000. That one's much more complicated.
Yeah, well, it's a bigger.
And it largely depends on if we need televising. Because sometimes what we try to do is if we're doing a project like that, we'll try to group them all into one televising, because televising is probably gonna be around five grand. That's usually what it costs to get them out here for a day or two. And we try to group them as much as we can, because we're paying the Mobe cost regardless. So we try to get as much done in a day or two as we can, maximize that value. So right away you can have, you know, if we're looking at $30,000 for the master planning, right away you can have 5,000 into televising.
So there should be an allowance, what I hear you saying is there should be an allowance for televising.
Yes, so we've tried, like again, I would try, if we were gonna do it, I would try to televise both of those projects at the same time, as much as we can. And there's gonna be pipes where we just can't get, we just, they start to go up the pipe and it gets stuck and they have to pull it out, because they don't wanna lose our equipment under the street.
Gold Park's gonna be ugly.
And we have stormwater issues down with those new houses on the other side.
And so to be clear, whenever we're talking about a master planning process here, this isn't like a streetscape, complete streets type of a thing where we have design charades and property owner meetings and stuff like that. This is just getting a length of pipe, trying to find out what needs to be replaced and get a cost estimate. That's really the end goal here. And we use existing aerial mapping to create a plan for it just to get a cost estimate. We aren't necessarily looking at doing a full-blown survey design at this point. That would be, once we come up with the cost estimate, we have it properly budgeted, we know which year this is gonna happen, then we'll do proper survey, design, bidding, everything else with it.
So we have two engineering chunks, really, that are occurring. And this is preliminary engineering to find out what's there. And our guesstimate is somewhere, I'll put the number, 35 grand by the time you're done, if you're doing televising at least, at least to do these two, East Lincoln and Gold Park. We good with that, everybody? I know, we don't. I mean, but we will entertain comments if we think there's another way to go. Okay, from the consensus here is that you should proceed and we should follow it into, as I said, two chunks and follow it as two projects. We'll get started. Thank you, I think. Any other questions about any of the old business that Chad just reviewed? If not, Deborah, how was that conference?
It was good, but real quick with the bills, I just wanted to let you know, out of 167, there are approximately 34 businesses that haven't paid and around 130 residential properties. Just to kinda break it down a little bit, I had that information too, but I.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, conference was a big success. We were the only speaker scheduled for the first opening day, so the check-in was 12 to 6:00 and our workshop was 2:00 to 3:30. So we had around 25 participants. We started with a 40-minute PowerPoint presentation to explain MS4, the MCMs, public outreach, public involvement. There were only two other stormwater coordinators there. Some of the other attendees were council members of different municipalities, mayors, planners, environmental personnel, and our local press was there that covered the event. So they're working on an article for us there. After the presentation, we broke into about 10 groups and put the barrels together, so everybody was working as a group. And we got 4.5 out of 5 for our reviews. Karen, she was a big help that day. The people who attended had a lot of good takeaways. They requested copies of our presentation. So they kinda wanna get more involved in this type of public outreach. So it was kinda nice to do something that was a benefit to the entire community. And a few of them are gonna call to try to get some of these workshops set up in their community. So that's all I have. I don't know if Charles or Karen have anything to add.
Got to meet a lot of interesting people, Ms. Pennsylvania.
Yes, Ms. Pennsylvania was there.
She's very smart.
Yeah, she has an engineering degree. And so, in fact, I was like, "How is Ms. Pennsylvania keynote speaker at sustainability conference?"
We're hiring. In case she's watching.
But yeah, it became very apparent very quickly why she was the keynote speaker. She knows her stuff. It was very impressive. I moderated a session the following morning on buy-in to sustainability efforts. I was moderating a panel discussion of experts in the field, which I thought was really enlightening to hear the different perspectives. And the audience, the room was full and they were very engaged, asking the panel some very apt questions. Overall, I echo Karen's and Deborah's assessment that this was a privilege, that they chose Gettysburg to come here. It was their first multi-day sustainability conference, so usually they've had these kind of like half-day sessions in different towns across the Commonwealth. This is the first multi-day conference and I think PML was very pleased with the outcome and they intend to grow the conference in future years and they're talking about coming back next year.
They like us.
They like us.
Well, how do we stack up? You know, it's always nice to know how you're doing and we're kind of in a vacuum. How are we doing when you compare it to other organizations? What are we missing?
That's an interesting question. I don't know that we've ever really taken the time to assess how we operate versus others. I don't know, Deborah or Chad.
But I mean, I just throw that out there.
A lot of people are just asking about the different requirements for our permit and I don't think people are as involved. You know, you can use, you know, public outreach, Facebook, these type of meetings, but some of the other requirements are public involvement. And try to get the public involved in things other than just attending a meeting is something a lot of folks aren't doing. So they had a big interest in that. And I think just with our inspections and passing our five-year point with DEP is really great. We didn't have a big punch list for that, so I think we're ahead of the curve.
Let me, so if I can better understand your question, how are we doing compared to others in terms of just our program or in terms of the bigger picture of cleaning up our streams?
Well, I think it's a multifaceted question, because, you know, I think public outreach, we seem to be doing pretty well. Okay? Checking off the box for how we're doing permit-wise, we seem to be doing pretty well.
And the reason I wanted to ask that question is because, so I think we're doing great compared to others. And we have a Stormwater Authority. There's a lot of little municipalities that don't have that. So they're really struggling to try to wrap their arms around the program. So I think we're doing great comparatively. What's interesting is in Adams County, we're not getting the spotlight that York and Lancaster and some of those counties that directly border the Susquehanna River.
Because they have the nutrient issues too.
That's the issue, yeah. That's where DEP's focusing all their attention on. So there's a lot of audits that are happening right now in those counties that border the Susquehanna River, that directly feed.
We're upstream.
We're upstream a little bit further, right? So, and they aren't, so far that they haven't, we haven't been told that there was any type of auditing happening in Adams County. So we don't know exactly how we stack up compared to the others, but it's just because I think that's just part of our geography. It's not necessarily because, that's not like a play on the fact that we're doing way better than those municipalities, it's just the fact that we're upstream.
And part of the conference at the end too was about sustainability, like green initiatives, you know, like large wheeled vehicles using things other than gas to power them and just walkability and, you know, how communities can focus on recycling and all sorts of things at the end. We're actually like gold star community.
Yeah, we're for sustainability Pennsylvania. We're gold community, platinum being the highest, red being second highest. I would add, I think some of the things we're doing are innovative. When we pitched to the organizers of the conference, "Let's do a rain barrel workshop," as opposed to just sitting in a room and having a lecture.
Talking about rain barrels.
Right. Well, you learn about rain barrels, you learn about the sustainability, then you actually make one. Generally, conferences don't do those types of activities. So that got us a lot of cred, street cred, if you will. There was a lot of conversation about the borough's robust recycling programs. So we got some additional accolades for that, you know, with our paper shredding, with our electronic recycling and then of course our single-source recycling curbside for all residential units across the municipality. And then we started talking about, we would like to tiptoe into hazardous waste, which is a whole different animal, but we're beginning those discussions. So I think that we are, as a borough, recognized as being proactive in moving forward in some fairly unique ways compared to others.
Okay, good to know. Any questions of Charles or the staff on any of this? All right, no new business? No public comments?
I have a question for Chad.
Yes.
Did you hear back about the storm grate to get covered?
Yes, I did get a response from the property owner, said that he would take care of it. Had his contractor take care of it. So I'm assuming that it hasn't been taken care of yet. So we'll continue to follow up. It's clear that it needs to be uncovered.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Thank you very much.
Let's rise for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She's not well.
Chief's not well either. All right, an executive session of the Borough Council, the Borough of Gettysburg, was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the October 23rd, 2023 monthly work session of the Borough Council consistent with Section 708A5, the Sunshine Act. Next, we have our approval of the agenda and minutes. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion in second. Any questions or comments about the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and next, before we have the motion, are there any known corrections to the minutes for October 10th, 16th, 23rd, or 30th? All right, if not, can we have a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting of October 10th, the work sessions of October 16th and 30th for the budget, and the council work session October 23rd as presented?
So moved.
Second. Okay, a motion in second. Either Mr. Burger or Mr. Law, your choice. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to public comment. Our first public comment session is restricted to those items that are on the agenda this evening. Any public comments? Seeing none, we will go to current and old business. Ms. Marshall.
Hello, you have one motion on your agenda from me relating to the sign ordinance. I do wanna go over a couple of updates. One, the rezoning update. We had an open house last week. It was very well, or not last week, last month. It was very well-attended. We had really good interaction with a DOT survey for which uses, the survey was for which uses belong in which districts. Then we also got a considerable amount of feedback on the draft zoning maps. That feedback went back to the zoning committee. They revised the map and that revised draft map is up on the website for review on the swipe map on the rezoning website. So it's available for public inspection. That will also be an item for discussion on the upcoming Planning Commission meeting next Monday, the 20th at 7:00 p.m. And the other item for that agenda so far is the library subdivision plan at the seminary.
Are there any questions for Ms. Marshall that are not related to the motion?
Our building permits. It states on them that they have to be posted, correct?
I'm not sure if it states on the permits. I'd have to look.
Okay. Well, there just seems to be a lot of construction going on and there's no permits posted, even though they have permits.
Right. I know Pete got a call earlier today about construction without a permit posted, but he went over the permit was posted. So I think maybe sometimes it's, I don't know if they're putting them up before he gets there or if it's just a matter of perspective. But he does stop and talk to people when he sees construction without permits. But, yeah, you know, we do what we can.
Other questions? All right, can we have the motion to finalize and publish?
I'll make a motion to authorize the finalization and the publication for intended enactment of a proposed updated modified sign ordinance for the purpose of superseding the planning and replacing the current Gettysburg Borough sign ordinance, which is codified at Chapter 19, Part 1, Subpart A of the Borough of Gettysburg Code of Ordinances.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Questions about the proposal to authorize the finalization and publication? All right, so this would be prepared then for December. This will bring us in line with Reed v. Gilbert in terms of the Supreme Court decision that really impacted the ability to regulate signage. Do you have any comments you wanna make, Mr. Stevens?
And of course, we are having the public hearing on the proposed ordinance. And that will be conducted on Tuesday, November 28th at 6:30 p.m. The first advertisement was in the Saturday, Gettysburg Times. It will be advertised again next Saturday, so.
There are no other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, that takes us to historic and environmental preservation. Ms. English?
Thank you. I'm gonna my manager's report and we have three motions on the table. We did attend a sustainability conference at the Wyndham. It was very well-attended. Through PML, we did a rain barrel workshop. I think there was about 80 people registered for the conference overall. We had 25 folks sign up for our rain barrel workshop on Wednesday, which was the first day and we were the only event that day. Got a lot of positive feedback and Charles and Judy were both there, if they have any other comments. But it was well-attended and it was a really nice event.
Any comments you wanna make?
I would just like to say that Deborah and Karen did a wonderful job with that rain barrel program. It was so well-received and people commented that they learned more than they'd ever wanted to know about rain barrels. So, thank you and congratulations. It was really popular to be here in Gettysburg. And at the end of the first day's evening, when they were all setting out to come down town to shop and to eat, Charles was just besieged with requests of what they should see, where they should go, what they should order. So they were very enthusiastic about Gettysburg group. We hope they'll come back again. But yes, very successful.
Are there any questions for Ms. English unrelated to the HARB motion? Someone make that motion, please.
I move to accept the recommendations of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, HARB, following its review on October 18th, 2023, and grant certificates of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA-230062, major project, 136 South Stratton Street. Unitarian Universalist Church, Trinity UCC. For the proposed restoration/painting of the small historic round window above the front entranceway on South Stratton Street. Remove the double front doors and reconstruct them with Kaya African mahogany wood in the same design of one and three-inch, three-quarter inch split panels and restore and reuse the original door hardware as presented in the application dated September 22nd, 2023. COA-230083, major project, 141 South Stratton Street. COA-230083, major project, 141 South Stratton Street. Trinity UCC parsonage for the proposed replacement of the two front-facing wood porch columns with the same design using alternate HB and G permacast round materials without taper columns as presented in the application dated September 22nd, 2023. COA-230075, major project, 60 East High Street. Trinity UCC Church Fellowship Hall for the proposed repair of all rotted window sills on the west, north, and east sides of the Fellowship Hall by repairing the wood sills and wrapping them in aluminum as presented in the application dated September 22nd, 2023.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion in second. Are there any questions or comments about the HARB motion for the month? Okay, not seeing any. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any further questions for Ms. English? Okay, if not, we go on to parking. Ms. Thistle.
Good evening. You all have my report. I have the comparisons as usual, the charts, the graphs there. And then there were 42 LPPs purchased in October, 20 reserved parking spaces in the parking garage in October. Other than that, I just have the motions.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Thistle not related to the motions? If not, can we have the motion for the accessible space, please?
I move to authorize the designation and establishment of a parking space reserved for exclusive use of persons with disabilities in the area on the north side of Breckenridge Street between South Washington Street and Franklin Street, and to authorize the placement and erection of appropriate signage for that, that the parking space is so reserved for persons with disabilities, that no parking is allowed in the space by others, and that any unauthorized person parking there shall be subjected to fine and may be towed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
How will it be determined where along there that place will be? Is it closer to one of the intersections? Is it in the center of the street?
It was requested, the first space off of Washington.
Yeah, the request was, I don't want to say vague, but it kind of called out the intersection. And when we looked at it, it would seem logical to put it in that first space on Breckenridge Street. The person requesting it has a rear entrance that actually goes on to Breckenridge Street.
It's a corner property, and the entrance is at the rear, yes.
And it's just, seemed a more appropriate place to put it because of the number of spaces there on Washington Street. So, yeah, I imagine it'd be right there on the corner.
And they wouldn't have to cross the street as well.
That was the other issue, because they had to crawl, they'd have, all the parking was on the west side of Washington Street. So it didn't seem to make sense to have someone crossing that street then, that is having issues with getting in and out. Any other questions?
I'd just like to comment that I think this is wonderful, but it is, just to remind the public that it is not specifically for this one resident with special needs, disabilities. It is a parking space that is public for anyone with, any person with disabilities to park there if they are, have a handicap permit to do so, sign in their car to do so. But I appreciate that this resident reached out. I do think we need more handicap parking available in our borough. So I appreciate that this resident reached out for this.
Okay. Anything else? All right, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and next is the motion for the Christmas festival. So I want to make that.
I'll make a motion to set a temporary daily rate of $15 for parking in the borough's raceway parking garage on Saturday, December 2nd, 2023 during a Gettysburg Christmas festival special event.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion in second. Questions and comments?
How does this affect our, or does it supersede our, oh, the other permits that people like to get? The daily things in the garage? Currently, it's a 10, 12?
$12. So the permits, the permits, the pay-by-phone and the kiosk are all programmed to the $15 between the hours.
So it supersedes.
So if someone were to go in on that day, on our, like, for example, I think you can order it on our website, the day of parking, it went the whole day type of thing in the garage, it would have already been set for that.
Yes. And those permits that are bought daily, they become active immediately when you purchase them?
And our, sorry for the question.
No, that's fine.
Our residents that buy the
Monthly?
The monthly permit that aren't guaranteed a specific space but are guaranteed a space.
They are not.
Or not guaranteed a space at all.
They are.
But they pay us monthly for said space.
Correct. Unless they pay extra for the reserved space, those 20 that I said, those are reserved.
So that will, we'll, hopefully, that's in accounting of our
Yes, and those are designated.
Inventory for the parking for those people that have paid for that monthly reserve spot.
Those are designated spaces.
Yeah, they're numbered.
They are numbered.
Okay, other questions or comments? This is pretty much the way that the borough makes revenue for this.
And I think
There's a lot of outlay, and this is pretty much the only way that you can make revenue is by parking.
There are other parking spaces, parking spots available. I'm sure that we'll hear about that as we get closer and closer to the Christmas festival. And even some, I'm looking at, maybe there's not even some shuttling in as they did last year, yeah. But this is definitely the prime time parking for a massive event.
It is.
And I think $15 for the day is reasonable.
It is.
I know what I pay at Disney World.
Any other comments? All right, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, any other questions for Ms. Thistle? All right, if not, Mr. Labour, Public Works?
Just an update on some of the things we're working on. We have a couple of events coming up here. The Public Works has been pre-staging the blocks for the hard road closures for the Remembered State Parade, which will take place this Saturday, November 18th. And then, beginning the week of November 27th, we'll be pre-staging the blocks for the hard road closures for the Christmas festival. And then next week, on Monday, November 20th, we'll be putting up the Christmas tree on the square with the tree lighting taking place Friday, November 24th. Currently, we are working on our annual leaf collection, which began on November 6th. We'll be continuing that through the end of the calendar year, where we go around collecting piles of leaves that residents have raked up along the curb. We've begun preparing for winter, getting our trucks ready, so in the event of winter weather, we'll be ready to go. And also, just continuing with our routine maintenance work, right-of-way trimming, fade design replacements, and cleaning stormwater catch basins for MS4 regulations.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Labour this evening? All right, if not, we'll go on to the engineer, Mr. Clayball.
One thing to add to Bradley's report, he forgot to knock one in wood before he talked about getting the trucks ready for snow. So a couple of highlights on my report is, first, we are working on the engineering on the Welcome Center. We submitted the land development plan. That'll be on the Planning Commission meeting agenda for discussion this month. Got a little bit complicated with the old stormwater channel that runs underneath the back of the projects. We ended up having to have it two different phases of land development. One, without the parking in the rear, and then the second phase with the parking. So again, there'll be some more discussion at the Planning Commission meeting about that. And we also are supporting our architect with the structural design of the building. So things are moving along well with that. I provided an update on the report with the 2023 Bridge Maintenance Project. There is an item on your agenda for an application for payment. It's a pretty fairly straightforward project. We're maintaining three bridges, the Constitution Avenue, East Water Street, and Court Alley Bridge. Their only change was the Court Alley Bridge needed some more work than we originally anticipated. That added up to about $3,000. That's included in this application for payment. But totally for the project, we had $120,000 budget, and we're going to come in within that budget. Your application for payment on your agenda is for $97,000. We're going to have this 5% retainings that we're holding probably until the end of this week, until they finish and punch those items, and then we'll release that 5% for your next month's meeting. And then you add the engineering to that, and again, that project's going to come in under budget at your $120,000 budget. So you do have my recommendation to approve that motion whenever I finish my report here. The next item I wanted to update you on is the Public Works Facility Master Plan. We've been working on, we've been talking about this for over a year now, and we did finally make some progress on this master plan. So when we get a chance, we'll be meeting with Ravi and Bradley to start discussing some options for proceeding with the revision of the Public Works garages. Provided you an update, as Carly mentioned, on the library subdivision. We did submit a review of that, and that will be on the Planning Commission meeting agenda. And two other things are, I think the last, most important, yeah, one other thing. The High Street Brews project, the land development completed quite a while ago, and we did go out and do an inspection. I heard from several people about when they're going to complete the landscaping and did talk to the property owner. They were struggling with the fact that their landscaping plan wasn't able to be implemented. So they're currently working on trying to get a new landscaping plan. They are aware that they need to complete the landscaping improvements that were authorized by their land development plan. So at this point, it's getting a little bit late in the season, so it'll probably be spring until they finish those items. But the property owner has been very willing to employ those landscaping. It's just a matter of having a plan that's going to work for them, so. That is it for my
Can I ask a follow-up question about that?
Sure.
When somebody has a landscaping plan like that, that they are compelled to implement, what happens when their customers consistently drive through the middle of the landscaping? Are they then sort of compelled to continually update that and keep it presentable? Or is it just like, we let that slide? How does that work?
It's a good question, and it happens a lot, and not just when somebody drives through it, but also five years down the road, when we kind of all forget about it, and they cut down trees, and they don't put them back up, you know? And so technically, the landscaping is a saldo requirement, so it goes along with the land development. We've often talked about, should it be like a zoning requirement that has a perpetual or a more permanent stance? We don't currently have it ordained like that, so it does become a bit of an issue whenever we're trying to look at something, maybe five years, 10 years down the road, people drive through it, people cut things down. It's a topic of discussion that we've had several times, Carly and I have had this, about the proper place for our ordinances and how you would try to maintain, or try to look back on these things post-construction. And I don't know if I have a great answer for you. It's a topic that we struggle with. I can tell you that in the short term, while they have a land development application that's at large, we can continue to make sure that they are implementing it. If they don't, there are certain hammers or cease and desist and those things that you could, that we can employ until they fulfill the requirement of the land development plan. But once they've gotten their authorization, then it's kind of one of those things where you got to kind of go back and do the enforcement.
Okay, thank you. The Welcome Center in your report, the timeline you outlined seemed a lot more aggressive than I expected. Is that funding contingent upon funding?
It is.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
So I was like, that doesn't seem, it outlined construction beginning in April, and I was like, I'm not aware of us receiving monies for that.
And I defer to the Main Street Gettysburg report, but, so the consultants, we want to make sure that we have our part done.
So make sure that everything is lined up.
Designed, ready to go for demo as soon as the funding's ready.
So, okay.
We are aware that there's a chance that we have it designed and ready to go, shelved, ready to go, and we don't put it out to bid until we're 100% sure that all the funding's aligned.
Understood. Just the way that it was phrased made me, led me to believe that it was happening.
Optimistic, we're optimistic.
Understood. That's okay. Other questions for Mr. Clayball before we have our payment motion? Okay, if not, can someone make that JDI motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve application for payment number one, JDI site sanctions LLC, or LLC in the amount of $97,983.13 for the items completed to date associated with the 2023 Gettysburg Borough Bridge Maintenance Project as amended by the borough engineer.
Second.
Okay, a motion in second. Any questions or comments about the payment motion? Okay, not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions further for Mr. Clayball? Okay, that takes us to the Police Department. Chief Glenny is unable to join us this evening. I would highlight in his report that, again, our detectives and our officers have been involved in a number of different investigations where they were able to locate people, notably a high-speed motorcycle chase, that they were able to terminate the chase, but had successfully acquired enough information to then make sure that that person was charged and with the violations that they had committed, including felony, fleeing, and attempting to elude, so. Also, I would note that the, I think we had noted this prior, but one week from today is the anticipated date for Cadet Lardarello now. This is becoming more concrete. We had heard before Thanksgiving that it would be likely that he would finish, and that's kind of the the date that the chief has outlined, he expects. So we should be seeing him sooner rather than later. And both cadets continue to progress well. It's just that Lardarello, with his past experience, was able to move through a few things a little quicker. So, the motion on the agenda this evening comes from the Civil Service Commission. This is a request that originated with the chief. It specifies in our current rules and regulations that the operator's license has to be from Pennsylvania for the application of many different things. And this would change that to just it has to be an operator's license from a state within the United States. So, someone, please make that motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the amendment of Sections 3.5, 3.7, 3.8, and 3.9 of the Rules and Regulations for the Civil Service Commission of the Borough of Gettysburg as proposed by the Civil Service Commission to remove and modify the requirement that applicants for the positions of entry-level patrol officer, sergeant, master sergeant, and chief of police must possess a valid motor vehicle operator's license issued only by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and that the requirement be amended for such applicants to possess only a valid motor vehicle operator's license issued by any state within the United States.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any questions that we should pass on to the chief? Okay, that takes us to the Office of the Manager and Treasurer. Mr. Gable, Mr. Stone?
I don't have anything to add. There's a lot of motions there.
I just wanted to acknowledge Planning Director Carly Marshall. This is her final meeting. As you know, she is moving on to bring her passengers with the National Park Service in Northeast PA. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Carly's been really instrumental in elevating the professionalism of the planning department, and you leave big shoes to fill, so we wish you well.
Thank you.
With that, I wanted to point out that the borough remains in good financial condition with respect to the general fund. As of October 31st, the general fund continues to run a robust surplus of over $500,000. If you remember, council authorized earlier this year a transfer of $750,000 from the general fund to general fund to capital reserve. So this is all a result of ARPA money, and it's good for us for now. We need to be cognizant that, I think as Mr. Lawver said last meeting, we're fat and happy now, but in 2027, things may very well be different. So just keep that on your radars. In the general fund, a bank account, not revenue versus expenses, there's 3.3 million combined with reserves. And so we continue to run above our fund balance policy. Earlier, council authorized me to send a letter to our representatives in the state legislature supporting House Bill 1619. That was done, and we received a response from Representative Mao saying that, that unanimously passed, and that he expects that to go through the Senate without much consternation. For those that aren't familiar with House Bill 1619, it's referencing the ghost poles and the safety hazards that they cause. With that...
Just a word to that, I noticed that, well, it's not, who is it now? Bright Star is the telephone company now?
Bright Speed?
Bright Speed.
Possibly.
They actually had engineers looking at poles this last month. Now, they're still arguing about who owns what wires, but they're at least out looking.
Yeah, well, that's some progress.
Some progress, yeah.
That's, that's a start, absolutely. That concludes my report. Unless you have questions, we could start going through the motions, and we could comment on each as we, we do so.
Any questions unrelated? We'll have another opportunity at the end, because there are quite a few. All right, the bills and payrolls.
I'll make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any questions or comments about the bills or payrolls? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, the GARA lease.
I'll make a motion to authorize the extension of the lease agreement by and between the Borough of Gettysburg and the Gettysburg Area Recreation Authority for the leasing of the Gettysburg Area Recreation Park for the operation of a community recreation and parks program by GARA for a term of 25 years, beginning on January 1, 2024, and ending on December 31, 2049.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second. This will enhance GARA's position in terms of applying for grants because it demonstrates the long-term commitment to the authority. Any questions or comments related to the motion?
It would also be a lot more expensive if we had to have that as a department ourselves. So I appreciate everything that GARA does for all of that programming.
Very accurate.
And facility work that they do as well.
Very accurate. All right, any others? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. All right, Maradusel.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing Maradusel, a firm of certified public accountants registered in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as the independent auditor of the Borough of Gettysburg during fiscal year 2024, in order to make an independent examination of the accounting records of the borough for fiscal year 2023, and to perform such other duties and to exercise the powers as conferred upon an independent auditor under the Borough Code.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any questions or comments about the auditors? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, the publication of the proposed budget.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Borough Secretary Sarah L. Stoll to give notice and cause the same to be published with the proposed budget, governing annual estimate of revenues and an annual estimate of expenditures for fiscal year 2024, has been prepared and will be made available for public inspection for a period of not less than 10 days commencing on Monday, November 20, 2023, and ending at the close of business on Monday, December 11, 2023, prior to the completion and adoption of the budget for the fiscal year of 2024 by the Borough Council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions or comments related to the publication of the budget? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is our fee schedule.
I'll make a motion to authorize the preparation and finalization of a proposed resolution for consideration and intended adoption at the next monthly general business meeting of the Borough Council to be held on Monday, December 11, 2023, for the purpose of setting, updating, and confirming the borough's fees and charges for the issuance of licenses, permits, and the provision of municipal services in fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions about the fees? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that takes us to the fixing of the millage.
I'll make a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare, finalize, and publish a proposed ordinance for intended enactment at next monthly general business meeting of the Borough Council will be held on December 11, 2023, for the purposes of fixing the real property tax rate for the Borough of Gettysburg for fiscal year 2023 at 4.1770 mils, the occupation tax rate at 30 mils, and the fire protection services appropriations tax rate at .5 mils.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions and comments, yes?
Shouldn't that be for fiscal year 2024?
Yes, it should.
I would say that it should be.
Good catch.
Mr. Berger, do you agree with that amendment? And I believe it's Mr. Carr?
Second amended.
Agree with that amendment? Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I think we've worked really hard to leverage our ARPA money in a way that we can continue to offer a high level of services while maintaining a flat taxation. And this modest increase this year, which is specifically going to fund our volunteer police department, is, sorry, do we have a volunteer? Fire department is crucial, and I'm glad they were comfortable coming to us with that request, and is a, a modest increase that improves the safety of our entire community.
Okay, other comments or questions?
And would be extremely expensive if we had a professional fire department, even though our volunteers are very professional.
Okay.
Some of the most highly trained volunteers out there.
We're very fortunate.
Okay, nothing else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that takes us to the resolution, appointing Scott Wallace.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing Scott Wallace as a member of the Gettysburg Borough Human Relations Commission to complete the unexpired term of Jenny Dillon, whose term on the Human Relations Commission will expire on April 15, 2027.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is occurring because Ms. Dillon's business relocated outside the borough, and I am, I would comment that I'm very sorry that, to see her go. She's a valuable member of the community, and was very helpful, I believe, in getting this commission up and running. Other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, are there any questions or comments for the manager? If not, we go on to our liaison reports. Let's start with Ms. Sellers.
Good evening, everyone. Main Street Gettysburg has been pretty busy, so I've got a list if you'll indulge me. I will certainly start with the Gettysburg Welcome Center. My first, my first thank you is to Chad and all of the team that has been working on all the preparations that have to take place. We are not fully funded, so this, this is, this is all preparatory work. We still remain in the federal budget ask, but you see where the federal budget is going at the moment, which is nowhere, but we're still in that, in that, in that race. We'll see where that ends up. On that, a couple of things did happen over this last month and a half. We met the $20,000 Challenge Grant, which meant that Adams County Community Foundation awarded us another $20,000, so that remains in, that resides in the restricted account for that, for that, for the Welcome Center program. The Giving Spree happened last Thursday and actually continues to happen, so really excited about where that's going to go, not only just for Main Street and this project, but certainly for all of the nonprofits in Adams County. 100 nonprofits participating that really give an enormous lift to how we live and why we live here. And I will give a shout out right now because you have until midnight tonight. We are at $3,28,754, and the goal is 3.1. So if you haven't given, please, you know, log in and, and help us reach that goal. We're really, really close to, to getting that. We'll have those results in the middle of December, so, and for those of you that did donate, thank you for your support across the board. Second thing that's, continues to happen is the facade improvement program. I hope, again, that you have seen a lot of the projects that have happened in, in our downtown, a lot of paint projects, a lot of restoration projects that have been enabled by this program. Those investments are significant. I think they're making some really impressive changes in places. We do still have some funding left, and those, it is a reimbursement program, so we're working through the state to do that, but we have a few more awards that have been made. It doesn't close until next summer, so for the painting projects that have been awarded that can't happen until the spring because of the weather and things like that, those will, those will still be possible under that program. So we do have a generous time schedule to make those things happen. Going on, the, one of the biggest things happening is Christmas, so if anybody else is counting, it's 17 days until the Christmas Festival is coming up really fast, so my computer decided to die today, so please send it best wishes. But we're, some really good things are happening, so have, all the printed materials went out. Sponsorship has been a really incredible response from businesses, organizations, and volunteers to get involved, make this happen. And one of the pieces of it, there's five or six areas, the shuttles will be running on both Saturday and Sunday. We do have paid parking around meters and the garages, but we also have some really incredible partners, the school district, HAC, the seminary, and, and the Heritage Center and some other places that are allowing free parking. So we have some really nice options for people to do that, jump on the shuttle and get to all the places where things are happening. So if you're a business out there and you need to know what's going on and you don't, I'm certainly going to share this one page of information. Go to the website, it'll tell you everything you want to know about end-to-end, end-to-end entertainment on three stages this year, so a lot of things happening, really planning on having a busy downtown that weekend. My other shout out is to Public Works, who is already coordinating all the details, not just for the road closure, because they do so much more than that. So a lot of the activities and things and the prep and the hands-on work that does, that happens behind the scenes, that none of these events would happen without that lift. So lots of other things, the tree will go up, after that, Steinware Trees will go up, a lot of decorating is going to start happening, it'll start feeling an awful lot like Christmas. The Christmas movie, so you may or may not have heard that there's a Christmas movie that's coming to Gettysburg. We partnered with the director, Bo Brinkman, to bring the movie as a free set of screenings for the Christmas Festival weekend. We were able to do that in partnership with Seminary Ridge Museum. We have 10 shows that went up for registration of tickets on Friday at 3:00, and they were gone by 3:10. So really excited to share this with the community. I wish it could be bigger, but this is really just a kickoff of this movie, sharing it with the community in this fashion so that it can, you know, have, it can go forward from here. But the goal from, from Bo Brinkman was to be able to share it with this community that embraced its production here, the businesses that went out of their way. If you remember, we had Christmas decorations up till February something last year, all the extra, extra that happened from businesses and citizens and extras that stood around in the cold for hours and hours to make this movie possible. He wanted to share this in this fashion first, and then it will, it will have continued life after that, probably in streaming or theater releases and things that are, you know, that are still in the works. So we're hoping to make this an annual tradition at the Christmas Festival, so, so keep your eyes peeled for other announcements as, as things develop on its, its greater release. And finally, I will say my thanks to Carly, because Carly has been instrumental in helping me learn a lot of things about the borough, how it affects the businesses that we, that I work with now at Main Street, and she has been just really an incredible colleague to have, and she will be hard to replace, but I wish you well. And I'll accept questions if you have any.
Questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Carr, the Recreation Authority.
I have nothing to report right now.
Okay, Mr. Berger, the Municipal Authority?
I was here at the budget meeting.
Okay. Mrs. Butterfield, the bid.
I missed the bid meeting because I was at the sustainability conference, but the next meeting's December 7, and I will be there.
Mayor cannot be with us this evening. The COG, Mrs. Butterfield.
It's upcoming, the meeting's upcoming on this Thursday. I was on the nominating committee, subcommittee, and we will be announcing the candidates this coming meeting. At the last meeting, Destination Gettysburg Director stood and praised our efforts on dealing with the tour buses, and it struck home to me that it's really important that we be at these liaison meetings because it comes up that we, something for Gettysburg or about Gettysburg, and, and I was glad I was there to hear that. I serve on the Collaboration Subcommittee. The meeting was canceled at this time, but Mayor Ron Harris is taking the cybersecurity survey that we devised to the county IT for approval.
Ms. Lawson is unable to join us this evening. ACTPO, Mrs. Butterfield.
We are revising the bylaws. That next meeting is on the 21st of this month. There is a requirement that ACTPO has a public participation plan, and the draft will be available for public review November 27 to January 12 at the county's website, at the county planning office, and at every library in Adams County, if anyone wishes to review the draft of what is lovingly called the PPP, the Public Participation Plan.
Okay. Overdose awareness, Mr. M.
We had our twice-annual medicine takeback on the 28th across the street at the Housing Authority. So Chief Glennie was there to help us, Sergeant Wykert was there, Officer Orth and Officer Panis. We took in, I believe, 374 pounds of medication this year, which I think is a record, and we also gave out 26 Narcan kits, and we will have another medicine takeback probably in April, so keep your eyes open for that. Please remember not to flush your medications or put it in the trash where it can poison animals in the water supply. Instead, save it and bring it to the medicine takeback. Task force meets again tomorrow, and then not again until the New Year.
Trail feasibility, Mr. Berger.
Nothing to report.
Recycling, Mrs. Butterfield.
Yes, I'm already getting registration requests for our next covered device event. People always give a big sigh of disappointment when I say it's not next week. For our 2024 dates have been set, so forwarded them April 20, October 19 for 2024, and our shredding event will be May 17. Related to that, I really hope we can pursue the household hazardous materials turn-in because people ask for that as well, and I stand ready to help with that. I, I think we could slide into that, and the response would be great. Thank you, everybody, for continuing to recycle.
The Fire Department's report was on your drive. We had nothing from Adams Regional EMS this month. Elected officials' comments? Elected officials, comments?
So, in relation to the, just to make a public comment, 'cause people have been asking me, in relation to the, uh, the mils, uh, that we've just passed, well, voted on tonight to publish, yes, it's a flat rate. No matter where you live within the borough, it's the same.
Yes.
Just making sure.
Yeah, it's based...
That's what I've been saying.
Well, I mean, it is, it is based on property valuation, and if you ever want a, a good education, uh, you can talk to Mr. Crum about how, at the county, about how property is valued, because that can be very educational.
So, the question ra, was raised about, uh, with the zoning changes, uh, that are being, are being discussed right now. Does that change anything?
No.
And I said, I don't think it matters where you live...
No.
...within the borough. I think it's about your property value itself and what, you know. Well, I live over by the rec park, but I don't need the rec park. I don't use the rec park. Why am I getting charged for the rec park? I don't think you're getting charged for the rec park.
Well, we make the contribution Recreation Authority, but yeah, that's not how that works. But, I mean, eh, eh, there were some questions in that town hall, at least one, uh, from a woman who had owned and occupied the same building for a very long time. Uh, and her question, it was related to that, it's not the millage, but it is how the property's assessed. So, residential property is assessed in one manner. Commercial property, I believe, is assessed three different ways.
Right.
Uh, and I don't have it in front of me, but, uh, Daryl Crum at the county explained that very thoroughly to me one, one time, and it's pretty interesting. And in her particular circumstance, that the building that she lives in was designed to house a storefront or a tradesman's shop or similar on the first floor, and previously did. Uh, her deceased husband operated such a business, and that's why she was asking, because if it was rezoned, and this was something that was caught in that process, about how that was zoned and it's been altered on that map, the new map. Um, but if it were rezoned, it could impact, if it were solely assessed residential, it could theoretically lower the property valuation. And not that that is the same as a selling price, but it's assumed there's a correlation. So, I mean, but no, the millage is universally the same, um, throughout, but the valuations...
Right.
And we have had people challenge valuations, and I've seen that also at work. Uh, you may recall the, uh, Legion Building, the former Legion Building on Baltimore Street has property valuation challenged very successfully, uh, because the amount, as things moved out of, or may have been the Times Square Building, but as things moved out of town, i.e. the Human Services Building went into use, the market for rentable office space, the demand remained similar, and the set, the, uh, volume available increased. Pardon me, the demand dropped and the volume available, uh, increased.
We saw that in July, didn't we?
Yeah, but before that ever happened, right? I mean, you had large areas of leased space in the borough that were vacated, so the volume available increased and the demand remained relatively constant or dropped. So, I mean, there is a relationship, but it is not related to the millage. Uh, other elected officials, comments?
Yes, I will. Um, I attended the PSAB conference in Erie in October. Some interesting programs on broadband, short-term rentals, right-to-know issues, and cybersecurity, all things that, that we're addressing. Um, and, and going back to the Sustainability Conference for a moment, are we, uh, Deborah, are brochures that you handed out, are they available out in the lobby?
I believe I did put some of those out there, and I can double-check and add some, and that was, um, actually, uh, created by Adams County.
It, um, water harvesting with rain barrels, interesting brochure, so keep your eyes peeled for them showing up. Um, just a quick announcement, the Arts Council's Third Thursday program on November sixteen will be an interesting program on the Supreme Court, given by Ted Hurd. Ten o'clock in the morning, kept to one hour, very tightly, at the Arts Council Building.
Any other elected officials' comments? Mr. Berger, anything? Okay, that, uh, takes us to public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we are adjourned.